You have video captions?
We can speak and we'll see. Yes, we have captions, we have video, we have sound. They're awesome.
All right. I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lantheer?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit? Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, does any member of the board have any conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items this evening?
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, with that being said, would the clerk please read the open meeting compliance certification?
The shortened version.
Yeah, let's go.
Because I didn't read the other one. Basically, let's say if you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. If you wish to speak to the board, please give your name and address. If you would like me to ask the questions to the board, please put it in the Q and A. And again, please include your name and address. The same thing to the public meeting room as well as everybody try to be nice to each other tonight. And that's more.
Okay, that was close notes. Thank you. First thing up, any public comment? Anybody online?
We have no attendees.
Okay, all right.
And the link is working on the website.
Okay, you should double check this. Yeah, okay, double check it. Okay. So why don't we just hold off on the proper course and just go right?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, we can get started.
So first thing up then will be the non-municipal permit for candlelight night.
Aye.
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 Come on up, come on up. Grab a seat, all of your sacks, Scott. We're full service here.
Okay. I'm Karen McCready from the Pittsburgh Chamber. I think I know all of you, Justin, Lily, Lisa, and I haven't been getting officially met, so a pleasure to meet you too. Yes, and then Mayor and I last morning. So I'm just here in front of the board to ask for the municipal permit for candlelight night, which is being held on Tuesday, December 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I believe you have the documentation that includes the road closing as well as our emergency management plan. So if anything were to happen during the evening, we have a documentation that the board is familiar with and we know who to contact and what to do. So that pretty much has remained the same the past couple of years with the exception of the people contacts changing, being current. So it's pretty much going to be running the same this year with South Main Street being shut down, activities taking place in the Village, South Main Street, State Street, Shane Place, and North Field Common. So a few little changes will probably be happening this year. I will be reaching out, or I have reached out to the town already, to ask permission to use the Bank of America parking lot. So if anyone has any connections with them, please let me know. And the reason we're doing that this year is Nolan's tent will not put up and take down the tent the same day. They said they have to leave it up until the next morning. We know that can't happen because South Main Street has to be open by 9:00 p.m. So we're looking for an alternate place to put the tent. And so we thought the Bank of America parking lot might be a good compromise.
And you might want to give a heads up to the fire department because they're right there with, you know, emergency vehicles.
Sure. Well, I think, yeah, okay, that's a good, definitely a good, a good thought. And I would reach out to them. And they're always involved, but it's a courtesy, obviously, to let them know in case anyone else is trying to use it as well. But I did speak with Spencer.
Karen, so Nolan's tent usually was for?
Nolan's tent was right on South Main Street, like in front of Greco and Bree, around that area.
And under the tent was?
Tables and chairs, really for people in case implement weather or the food vendors were out, they could have a place to sit down and eat.
But this year Nolan's changed their policy?
Well, they've actually been bought out by McCarthy tents. They, I think that happened last year, but I think new management has come in and they've changed the way things operate. And so they say they need four hours to set up a tent, whereas last time they would set it up within an hour and then we would have all of us get together and take it down quickly. But I don't think they're willing to have staff stay with it and...
What about Mr. Fox's property on Church and Main Street?
Which one, Lily?
That what used to be the bank, that's the parking lot behind?
So that's still empty at this point?
It's not supposed to be, but it is. I mean, something was supposed to happen there, but we're not sure that it's moving forward. But you're doing the hayrides?
The hayrides.
Because there's a pickup and drop off near there for the horse.
You're right, there is. It does, it does drop off at Church Street.
Yeah, but it's another consideration.
But Church is closed, I think.
Yes, yes.
But so pedestrians could safely walk?
I think so.
And access, and there's also a driveway from Main Street?
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, they could.
And that's Charlie Fox? Okay, okay. I mean, we could certainly check with him on that. It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I'd like to work it out just today.
So maybe we'll find out. So those are the, excuse me, the two. And actually, I would kind of like to use, maybe if we could even both of them to put food vendors, because I don't want cars parking there. I think the, the hope is with our shuttles that we get people shuttled in and keep the traffic away from the Village, to keep it less congested. So we'll see, yeah.
Charlie has had it blocked off, actually. He has a...
Parking lot, parking lot.
Yeah, right now it's changed.
Okay.
Zach, you had a thought? I'm sorry.
Just curious how the timing is being moved from the street to what's going to be there?
Well, Nolan's would, or McCarthy's now would put it up. And then it would have to stay up until the next morning when they come to take it down.
Okay, so will it still be put up in the street?
No.
Or this is going to be removed from the street altogether?
Correct, correct.
For that simple reason, that they won't take it down right away?
Right, right. Which in the long run might be even better, you know? So we'll see. So if something's, change is good, you know? So anyways, that's what we're looking at, so I just wanted to point that out. That's, that's what we're working with right now.
Karen, what about where Charlie Clinton is? Where the council lot, is it big enough over there?
I...
We were having...
Yeah, yeah.
You probably want to keep it close to where all the food trucks are.
But it's kind of like, Bank of America, they were still...
Still in the area.
Yeah.
I think the parking lot behind Charlie Fox's place, the pizza kitchen, yeah, it's starting to be the best.
Yeah, I think in terms of centralizing everything is really what we're thinking. There's the other right there.
Right. They had no choice.
Charlie's is too, I mean, it's right there, yeah.
Yeah, because if she can't get, if you can't get Bank of America, maybe we could get...
Didn't somebody use the Harley that, that space last year, though? Wasn't there something else set up over there?
There might have been Thirsties.
It might have been, yeah. Steve?
Yeah, they always set up stuff over there. Park now, we're going behind the retail office in 25 South Main. That's a large parking lot back there.
Yeah, that is pretty...
Howard Hannah's? I fucking didn't use that.
Where you own Dennis' office.
Yeah, Howard Hannah's and then, or S.J.'s parking lot.
I think Nelson's is going back there.
Well, Nelson's is in their part now.
Right off in Main Road.
Yeah, but I think Howard Hannah does use that though, because they're open that night with Santa Claus.
Yeah, they are.
All right.
Yeah.
They use them.
But, but a good thought, Steve, is that maybe we, I mean, that's another alternative. So now I'm looking at maybe four different...
Yeah, at least you have more options, you know?
Yeah.
So then the only change for this year is the tent placement? Is that correct, or did you say there was another change?
It's going to affect anything, yes.
Okay, that's the only change?
That's the only change you need to know about, yeah. Yeah.
Will be including music like last year?
I don't think we're going to, because last year Charlie Fox paid for that as part of the grand, or the celebration for North Field Commons, their anniversary. And this year, he's not interested in paying for it, so I think I'm just gonna, I, that's a good point, not going to have live music because we just can't afford it.
So maybe that'll change? So maybe we should request it's still okay to have it in case we...
You could, you know, keep it in.
Get in for a second.
Yeah, it was actually North Field Common. It was the first year we did it, we had jumbo shrimp and they were fantastic.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, but, I mean, it's tough, you know, winter, you know, winter weather and stuff like that. The other thought I also have, and it's, I don't think it's going to change your permit, is I may look at getting a smaller tent for up here and maybe an additional one in North Field Common. Because there's so many people down there with the kids on and reindeer and everything that...
And there's food trucks down there as well.
There's food trucks there too, well, yeah.
Okay.
So I make a motion to...
Hang on, just really quick, any other, any other comments from the board before we go?
Any comments or suggestions? I'm open to them.
So to be, to leave some flexibility here, do we want to just say that minor changes to the tent configuration is allowed based on approval of the code enforcement officer? Does that make sense? So we don't have to...
Yeah, I'm sorry, approval of...
If you want to change the tent configuration, talk to Steve.
Just Steve, okay, yeah.
And so the motion would be, it would just be a part of the motion, so you don't have to come back and protest or anything.
That's fine, I just didn't catch Steve. It's not a part I didn't catch.
Talk to Steve.
Okay, we're good? Ready for a motion?
Okay, Justin, do you want to make that?
I will make a motion to approve the permit application in front of us with the amendments that any changes to the tent configuration would be based on approval by the code enforcement officer. And also, live music would be allowed if the parameters change similar to those on our prior years.
A second.
Can we have a discussion? Discussion, absolutely. To clarify, any, when the tent is moved, I would assume that the chamber absorbs the insurance, the waiver would include it, even if it's on private property?
Yes, certainly if it's on private...
So the property owner does not need to have its own separate insurance for anything happening?
Goes under our insurance. So like when I use Bob Michael's parking lot for the horse people, he's included in that. And they'll get a, the landlord, whoever will get a copy of the insurance waiver, so good, good thought, yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call please. Okay, trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks for all your good work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions along the way or door, if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Thanks so much, Mary.
We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, he's talking, DPW report. Any questions for Zach? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
This is a small question. Did we come to a decision regarding the transplantation of the mums once they're done with their, with their display on the porch and...
The water authority is due this week to come out and do remediation to the turf that they cornered in Durham, in the state.
Okay.
So once that's done, then we can go over there and plant those.
Okay, great.
All right.
You just didn't want to plant them, you have them for...
No, that's right. Because currently what they did was they brought up all the base stone, so it's at the surface. What they need to do is reestablish the six inches of top stone. So then, once that's done, we'll have to sort of do it.
I'm sorry, Lily, where is that? That state in what?
State in Durham.
Durham.
New Crosswalk.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and Dave, did you have a question? Oh, I thought you did, okay. Any other? You're doing what you're doing.
They have one. Mowing of the arboretum field.
Yeah, we'll do one more of this, this fall, but that's going to require a frame, so we have to run.
I think that's standard, how it's always been, right?
No, I mean, the last time we did mow it, we had to run a six-foot mower deck for the skid steer.
Okay.
We'll have to do that again, but we'll also have to rent a wheeled skid steer. Because our skid steer carries up the land.
Okay.
And we're not trying to go backward in time and, you know, tear up what we've reestablished. The wheel is a little bit lighter on the turf, so we'll have to run both pieces of it.
Okay. How much does it cost to rent it?
For the day, we'll probably get it for two days. For the twelve inches, others, three hundred and fifty bucks a day.
Okay, like $700 to do the mowing, okay.
Yep.
I noticed that there was a water main break on State Street over the weekend. Did we find out what the cause was?
Yes, not the cause, I mean, it's old utility, so...
Okay. The water authorities, infrastructure.
Yeah, and it's how many sets the DOT finished up their paving project, there's been nine penetrations because of water main or water service issues in which they had to dig up the new dirt, so...
Yeah, it was kind of a shame, wasn't it? A big, brand-new road. Yeah.
It's, you know, they just finished it.
Yeah.
It was painted, it was really nice.
Yeah.
Here we are, another five o'clock in the morning and somebody called.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then I got a bunch of texts because, can you explain, this is helpful, because there were other hydrants that were gushing around that area. One was across the street from Village Hall, and I was receiving texts about it, that the hydrants are all broken.
So in order for them to do the repairs, a twelve-inch water main, you know, so you're talking somewhere around a hundred PSI and twelve inches of water cowl, that they have to take pressure out of that system and get rid of the water before they can break open the pipelines. Whatever they excavate is just going to backfill the water, creating erosion problems. So they have to turn the valves off in certain locations and open up hydrants to relieve the water and pressure to be able to do that. So they're repairing on State Street. Meanwhile, the hydrant across the street from the office is cracked open and scushing water that's running across the bridge in north, on North Weeshackway down Dairy because that's just...
Because water runs down here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, you know, one break over there affects, you know, the neighboring water service and things.
Okay. It's helpful to know, because a lot of residents thought the relief's all over, you know, came in.
The relief, but they were controlled of that.
They were controlled, yes, indeed. Thanks. Yeah, all set, thanks.
I do want to say that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, I am at the Niantic Amity Conference, so we got...
Okay, thank you very much.
Next week?
Yes.
Bring a mask.
What is that? Okay, wear a mask. Yeah, definitely wear a mask. Building inspector report. Anything for Steve?
I have something, so you have a paragraph about seventy-five in roll, briefly, because I know this is such a big project. I get questions from residents all the time, what's happening with seventy-five in roll? I don't know what's happening with, what's happening with seventy-five in roll? I see you have a paragraph here.
Very briefly, Dave.
Briefly.
The water issue is supposedly satisfying the issue. We still have not seen the last sheet to the Mylar Sot, which needs to be signed by myself, Zach, and Scott. I'm ready to issue the permit once they, or at least present the permit. There's discussions right now over what they want to pay.
What the, what the seventy-five wants to pay?
That's in all them lawyers' hands right now. All communications have been, at this point, have been between Dan Spitzer and Christian Nader of Seventy-Five. Dan Spitzer for us, Christian Nader for Seventy-Five in Roll, it's in their hands right now.
So what they want to pay for...
Ready to...
No, no, they want, what they want to pay for the water?
No, the permit itself.
For permit, okay.
The permit itself is, the permit itself is a very large number.
Did you have...
Perhaps on that point, we can just ask for an update from our attorney after the meeting.
Okay.
I think it would be good to give more information on that, but I don't think we need to discuss it here.
Okay.
Yeah, this is sort of, this is news that literally just happened, so I'm sure Dan wanted to give that, we'll give everybody an update, so thanks.
So the final permit hasn't been issued yet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for, for Steve?
One more for the clerk's patient, the final permit for the first three buildings.
Correct, there will only be the first permit. There will be three phases of this.
Okay. All righty, next up, thank you. Okay, next up, the treasurer's report, please.
I don't have much tonight. Okay, we have our bill pay. There's no adjustments, obviously, since when it was sent, so I just need approval to go ahead with the bill pay and the funding of the HSA for Alex Reeder.
Is there a motion? Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second please. Anybody want to second the motion?
I will second.
Okay, thank you. Pressure is on. Roll call.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lantheer?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Nice little question.
Sure.
Will the checks be ready to be signed tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
Little change over in the office.
Okay.
I'm hoping by Thursday, early Friday.
Okay, because I might be here early Friday, going out of town, so...
If not, I'll have you know.
Yeah, then I'll do, I can do it. Don't, I'll take it, yeah, don't even worry about it, because I know you're...
Yeah.
Yeah, you're on the road, I know.
Lily, you're talking about trustee checks? As we're talking about trustee checks? Okay, we have August financials. And again, I have no concerns, everything's moving along very swiftly. Don't see any issues, everything's looking good. Is there any questions or concerns?
You can clip it along on this, I mean, we're really pretty caught up.
Yeah, we're, actually, we're caught up. I haven't received September's, makes me miss to do September, so...
So that's, that's really nice.
Is there any way, just to think about how, I've looked at budgets in the past, I have, I know we got the modified budget, and that's based on the movement of money with the help as the year goes on. Is there any way to show the budget as adopted on the line item?
Right now, since we have modified anything, actually, this is, this is adopted.
So this is current, so that's...
Yeah, and the program doesn't give me that capability.
Okay, is there any ability to show last budget years?
No.
No?
No, it, the NISM law book, ready to burn, is very limited to one year at a time. And that is why I had to catch up with the bank reps, because I couldn't even close the program and start the new year until the program was closed. And that had to wait for our accountant and everybody. It really does not do that capability.
It's not very flexible, that one?
No, these are the reports I have for...
Are we moving up? Dave, does this stuff ever?
If you want us to spend about $30,000 to $40,000, yes.
To move from the current to something new?
We want to look at other software, it's quite costly.
Okay. Now, if I were to request anything that said, hey, give me last year, give me this year, separate from what you see here?
The only report, the way to do that is really when we do budget planning, and it really doesn't take into what is going on right now, at least that I see. I have, I'm working with the program people this week to resolve any checks printed and everything else, to bring me up to speed real quick. I can ask them if there's another program or another report in there, or if they can create it, but they're really, for what is there, this is it.
Okay.
It's very limited. No, I would like to see that occasionally, to see where we are in comparison to the previous year, but it doesn't give me that capability.
And another comment, it just seems as though the expended amount is far less than the remaining balance or the unencumbered balance at the bottom line. Is that just because lots of our expenses come towards the end, or am I asking a ignorant question?
We haven't hit, we're just hitting our strike. You're seeing through the end of August, we've already spent September, you won't even see that in this report, the way it is, because it really deals one month at a time. You have to, I can't even enter September until August is closed. Yeah, and at this time of year, we really, this is, we haven't really spent a lot of money yet. We start picking up this mystery, right, early spring.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion to approve the August financials as presented. A second.
Okay, roll call please.
Okay, trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lantheer?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. And that was General Lynn Stewart?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Okay, 2024 healthcare, just a review of the plan that we offer the employees when the more know where the costs are. It has gone up 14%. It's not a change in the deductible that we fund. This is really a reflection of the COVID virus and what did it alter, and they're still playing catch-up. This is much less than what they asked from the state to increase it. We kind of fall in the middle of the road with our plans. Some plans got hit with almost 19%, some got hit with 11%, so we're on the lower scale at the end. And I think we're safely in budget, so I think everything looks good. So we'll be rolling it out to the employees again in November. So I just needed to roll that thing in dental. In dental.
Are there any significant new benefits or any that are going away?
No, no, it's just like I said, minor, everything's minor.
There are adjustments to anything.
Just adjustments. In the comparison, looking at other plans, it really isn't anything we can offer the employees, you know, we can always offer better, but we try to stay respectful, giving them a nice plan, it's not the lowest plan and it's not the highest one.
That's a good one.
We have motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lantheer? Trustee Lantier.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes. Um, as we discussed after the fire, we wanted to look at all the electrical. The building needs a total upgrade for its needs, for the capacity. And to take us up to the next level, we had Ellen Larch to provide the quote. They reached out to our genie that's part of the process, and these gentlemen probably can talk for electric much better.
The lights need lights for their position.
So if you have questions, I'll go ahead and talk to them.
Yeah, do you want to talk about like the role of our genie? Anybody want to just come in on?
Yeah, so our genie has come out to the service disconnect and then do an upgrade on the service supply to the meter. You know, and all the lights just don't come out, and the two hundred days service they're attempting to with, there's a four hundred days service or a year. So that should carry the load and probably having to watch the lights dim quicker every time, you know, times or less if you.
I'm sorry, did you actually have the quote?
No, I was just gonna ask. I don't see it in here.
No.
In here.
I think, what was it, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, roughly fifteen.
Fifteen thousand, twenty fees for the electrician and our genie. I was sending that out to you tomorrow. I thought, for some reason, it didn't.
I saw it somewhere. I thought it was.
I thought it was in there.
So why is this a non-budgeted expense?
Absolutely, it's non-budgeted.
Because we didn't, you know, fire.
It was something the fire triggered us having to look, because it's tough. We don't know for sure what caused the fire. It's undetermined. The concern is, we've had electrical problems like we see with the flickering. We had some major flickering the day of fire, so the thought is, you know, go with your obvious gut that our electric needs to be updated. Our payment is, yes, see, and when he's speaking.
Yeah, well, you can't add anything. Really, if we want to change more energy efficient to furnaces, should we change to like heat pumps, which are more electric-based than what we have currently?
So now we add to the load that currently exists.
And also, we're going to be upgrading the meeting room with additional technology, you know, with computers, you know, just, we upgraded the cabling in the building, so there's additional.
Yeah.
And we might as well put a charging station in there.
Yeah, and that was factored in, the idea of putting in a charging station.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. I think we leave much better, in a much better position.
No, I do. I'll just add, I included it.
None of it's insurance coverage.
No, no, this is standard building maintenance. Um, as we can see, we're at capacity, so, you know, that was the charge the board wanted me to look at, you know, what we need to do for a full electrical abilitation to make sure we're safe, and to do that, we need to upgrade. So what I can do is, I'll send you out the quote tomorrow. I do apologize. I thought I attached.
Yeah, then we can bring it back to the next meeting.
We can bring it back to the next meeting. We just want to start the conversation, and, you know, obviously, we'll have to put it out to bid to talk to electricians. We just wanted to get a rounded out number to start what we need to do to resolve this issue. Okay. All right, beautification contracts. I'm still waiting to hear back from the clerks. I actually have a dinner with them next week, so I'll have more time to see what they're doing.
Great.
Okay, so I just want to know. I did start touching this on that. And that is all I have.
Is this good enough, Steve?
Yep.
Lily? I thought of another question that I wanted to ask, Zach. I'm sorry during the report, so I'll just go back to it, and that is, where do we stand on the tree order?
I'm hoping to have it up to, to John's secretary next week.
Is there, is there a chance that we would get some planting done this fall?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Right now is the time to do it. Between now and.
Frost.
The ground.
Yeah, please.
You know, span of two months.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you saw the, my comments back, and you're able to adjust?
Yeah, I can make adjustments around that, so.
Okay, then.
Once the quotes come in, I'll keep posted.
Then we'll have a clearer picture, how many we can do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, and any other questions or comments? Want to move on? Okay, next up, the amended canal permit. And I think you sent out additional information. Did everybody receive that?
Sure, yeah, if I could just comment on this one briefly. So we're looking at the same permit that, when we say amended, we mean amended from, actually, it's a new permit, right? Because we didn't have a permit before, so I guess I just want to be clear about the terminology we're using.
I think the way the Canal Corp looks at it, just that it's the same permit that would have been signed eleven years ago, and the only amendment is the little scout project to this one. You know, that was the, way back, that was the original intent, that, you know, let's get up to speed with the permit that went out in twenty eleven or twelve or something.
Gosh, so I've been trying to understand this permit, and my, my primary concern with it originally was that it didn't include the possibility of a trail leading to the arboretum. I've been trying to better understand that issue and figure out what we would need to do forward to include that, and I think I've actually got some clarity on that today. I spoke with Kevin Cairns. I just called him up from the Canal Corp this afternoon, and he's kind of our point person for the permit, and he explained to me that essentially, what's happening here is that the, and pardon me if I use the wrong terminology in paraphrasing this conversation, but basically, we've got a picture in our diagram. It needs to be rotated ninety degrees. It's this thing here, and you've all kind of seen that in the packet. There's an area of occupancy that's bigger than what we previously had to include the DPW yard and other things that we were using, and that also, that area also includes the Boy Scout gardens, and it would include the area of the trail. So my concern was that the terminology in the application, if you go up to the letter, it talks about lands for passive beautification area adjacent to the village of, village of history DPW buildings. My concern was that passive beautification area, it didn't include the possibility of a foot trail, and from talking with Kevin, it definitely does. So.
How so?
Well, he, he said, and again, I may not be using the correct terminology here, but he said that that would be included, you know, some kind of a foot trail, maybe with benches, could be something that's included in that. It sounds like this is terminology from higher up, and it might be kind of template language, but he did say there is a precedent, he used the word precedent for interpreting this in order to include trails. So he said there would be a work permit that would be required, which would be the standard process, and we received an email that had some, some language about that.
And you received an email about that?
I believe you did as well, from Scott.
Oh, the one from Scott, okay, that's what Kevin, I was just.
Right, so, and that was my understanding before, that, you know, there, there might be other permissions required for that trail, which could include seeker or other elements, but the permit itself would stand, and essentially, all of the subsequent work permits would form a part of that major permit, essentially, and they would amend it as, as needed, but the terminology as it is would include that kind of use. So that addresses my concern, and based on that discussion, as it just summarized it for the board, feel free to talk to the Canal Corp if you have your own concerns or questions, but I would be willing to, to make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the amended canal use occupancy permit.
Okay, any additional comments or discussion?
I made the same phone call.
Really?
And he said, I just spoke with somebody from the village for a good half hour, and so I got the, short of it, didn't want to take any more of his time, but it was essentially the same thing. I didn't know who it was who had made comment, but the passive beautification area did include the opportunity for a trail, as we had discussed as a possibility, so I would concur and second your motion. Shouldn't you present?
Great, I just did, so.
You just did.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any additional discussion on the board? Okay, we have a motion, a second. We'll call, please.
Can we also hear from the public?
Oh, sorry, didn't see your hand.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue. On behalf of the friends of the arboretum, I just wanted to go on the record and thank the work of trustee Lickett and trustee Marshall to ensure that this trail goes forward, because this was scheduled at the meeting last week. We believe it's an important component of achieving the overall motion for the arboretum.
Great, thank you. Okay, any comments online? Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion.
People online, too.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, we'll call trustee Lickett.
Hi.
Trustee Lantier.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving along. We're flipping now. Okay, the authorization for setting a public hearing that would be on October twenty-fourth at six P M. And you'll see, the first one up is the.
I mean, I suppose this is all up to the board.
Yeah, oh, gosh, want to move forward.
I know objectives and changes as well.
Yeah, and, and just a reminder, we, we had changed the lead time for public hearings.
Right, the reason we're able to do that is we amended the Pope notice, Pope notice, I can't speak, five to five days, so I have the time. I still think better practice is to give it a meeting, we think.
One more meeting, yeah.
But we have the time and we have the capabilities, so we can.
And it's been before the board, a number of times.
Yeah, yes, well, so at least in the fore.
Yeah, yeah.
And just to clarify, the code enforcement officer has the right, should he choose to do so, to request input from the trustees? Should there be a conflict where you get three special permits at the exact same time? You know, we could come back to it. Should you ask us to? That's all, right?
Yeah.
Okay, for sure, just to be sure.
Yeah. Okay, we want to.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three at six P M for the proposed local law on non-municipal permits.
A second. Okay, we'll call.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Lantier.
Hi.
Trustee Lickett.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, the proposed local law on board membership for the same date and time.
I'll make a motion to move this to a politerian at the same date and time.
I second.
Okay, we'll call.
Trustee Lickett.
Hi.
Trustee Lantier.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, discussion of RFP for capital planning, and I think, was there a directive to you?
There was a directive to me in the meantime, to reach out to our accountant to see if he could handle this. I have unfortunately not heard from him back. He's in the middle of school audits, so he's busy. I would request to give me, you know, till our next meeting to get, meet with him, but I also would like permission to reach out to our financial advisors. This actually might be more off there. But I didn't want to do that without board permission.
Oh, I see.
And then I can get an estimate across from them.
So just as another option?
Is another option.
Okay.
I personally think it would be good to reach out and ask people if they do these things, the advisors, or if they know people, as well, I think, prior work that we've done with the comprehensive plan, to see if this is worth what they do, because if the accountants come back and say, we don't do this work, then we need to have a couple opportunities and avenues, and I think that just brief reach out is thoughtful enough that if we put then the RFP out, they'll know it's coming.
Correct, and that's.
Okay, so we can give her a little more latitude, like, let's, you know, just research it.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely put in the phone call.
Okay.
So that would, I think trustee Marshall's suggestion is that we look up the firm that helped us with the comprehensive plan, and see if that's something that they.
Yeah, I think they moved, yeah, I know.
They merged.
Yeah, they merged and changed, and it's.
Oh, I can think of it.
We're all kind of there, but.
Yeah, I can find it.
We're having a moment collectively.
And I thought about the financial advisors, but again, I didn't want to reach out, because definitely it's.
No, but I think.
Do this.
More latitude to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, people do this. We need their help, you know, I think it makes sense.
I'm sure it's good with it. Definitely make those phone calls.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving along. New York State retirement resolution.
We're not quite ready. I need some documentation from, we need to sign that paper.
Okay.
As soon as I get it, then I can present the resolution at the next meeting to satisfy New York State. This is something, every time an election takes place and trustees are reelected, I have to reconfirm their time, and we have the new one signed up. It's only if you sign up for New York State retirement, so then a public resolution has to be done saying you're, you're doing New York State retirement. It's New York State retirement.
So it's basically an administrative action that carries forward?
Yeah, it's administrative, and.
Okay.
Really depends on who's signing up, because it's still continued.
I'm not signing up, but.
You can sign up at any time you choose.
Am I saving the village money by not signing up?
Yes.
Yes.
Short answer, yes.
It's because we pay off tiers in this percentage of salary.
Yeah.
Saving us a couple dollars.
Oh, yeah, we make a big bucks, too.
You're talking a couple dollars?
Yeah.
I never know, because we've been having some good years in New York State. It goes up, it comes down. You never know what the flow of that is going to be. They've been trying to level off. We had a couple of great years, and I think that's ending too. I don't, you know, I can't guess what the consequences.
That might still come back.
But it'll be next meeting. I meant to reach out to you, and it's just been.
They're probably sure to do.
Okay, so moving along, review of the COVID policy.
I'm gonna pass that up, too. Lots of handout. We adopted a policy for COVID in twenty-twenty-one. This is where, where employees had to be vaccinated. If they didn't have, if they didn't vaccinated, they have to test on a regular basis if it was, they had a reason to not vaccinate. The board, I think it was twenty-twenty-two, towards the end, decided to let the testing, the weekly testing of the non-vaccinated employees. We also have a policy, if someone has COVID, like I did, you're, the state requires us to pay the first five days of someone being out with COVID. That's ending in December.
And that's regardless of whatever sick leave they had for something else.
Right, it doesn't charge any banks. It doesn't. It's just what it is. The, at five days, the employee could come back with a mask, staff on, I say DPW end and odd, and talking to board. We weren't happy with having someone coming back, still testing positive and wearing a mask, because DPW closed quarters and trucks, vehicles still didn't feel like they felt safe, safe thing with the office, because we've always had such close quarters, so we kept it till they tested negative, which we have found is usually around seven, eight days will be employees. So.
So this policy was formulated in twenty-twenty-two?
Twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, and has it been changed since then?
No, it has not been changed.
And how have we compared this to other policies?
It's pretty, it's really pretty close to what other municipalities are doing. Everybody had their own way of handling it when this all happened, so this was, the board put this through the wringer with Jeff and trying to find a solid policy.
And also based on, I think, some federal guidelines as well, and state.
It was a well thought out.
It was, yes.
I would say.
Yeah.
So this is the first time that I've seen this?
Yes, right.
And I think this is extremely tight. You know, COVID's coming around, and I don't know if we can afford having people out for weeks at a time, and I don't know if it's really necessary. I would like to do my own review, and talk to some medical professionals on this. How simple would we do this?
Yeah, she's, that's why she's bringing it back. In other words, this is where we were.
This is where we are. Like I said, we currently suspended the weekly testing of the non-vaccinated, because everything calmed out. We are seeing technically an uptick.
Sure will.
We had, me, I know someone in DPW, so we are seeing it. How do we want to move forward? Do we want to stay as quo? Do we want to have our people who are not vaccinated start testing again? Do we want to take any change, look at any changes? We did reach out and look on the Monroe County Health Department's website. We looked at the CDC. Since it's been suspended as being a national pandemic, they've kind of lowered their response to it, so there really isn't anything giving us any other guidance outside of what we have.
Yeah, I think the trend has been that it's sort of being treated like flu. It's just part of the flu season.
And that very well is how it will roll.
That's my sense of it from what I've.
Because I know New York State's law for us paying the employee ends in December, so it might be just you get COVID, it's on you.
Yeah, it just becomes part of your.
It just becomes part of, you know, you got, you got the flu, you know.
So then what are we doing with this tonight?
I just.
Showing to us.
Yeah, showing it to you, putting the thought in your mind, since we are seeing a little uptick. If there's anything you think we should look at changing with the current policies as we're doing, or, you know, because like I said, we kind of lightened the testing with our employees that are on vax.
Right, so the action item is, this has been brought back to the board.
Okay.
Now the board can review this on their own time, you know, as you say, if you want to do your research, talk, you know, get some additional information, and then come back, and we can maybe discuss this and, you know, just make a more reasoned, reasoned decision about where we are.
Right, and it might be something that just ends up into the, or is we treat it as just, like you said, the flu.
Yeah, it's part of flu season.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep, yeah, Zach.
For the time being, are we following this guideline that we currently have adopted, or, you know, kind of.
It's still.
Pay by year.
I think we're.
It's policy.
It's policy, so technically, we have to do exactly what's.
Unless, the only, I would say, the board agreed to not go to the weekly testing with the non-vaccinated. Is that something they want to change? Do they want to start having them test, or, I mean.
I don't think so.
We're all, you know, the possibility of being out or, you know, getting other people sick is not, you know, a good practice for us, but there's some standards, so everybody tests pretty.
Yeah.
Often.
Yeah, no, I mean, I've tested, I went to a high school reunion, and, you know, there were two people that came down with it, so I just kept testing to make sure, you know, So I just kept testing to make sure, you know. I mean, I think there's a cultural change, too, that we all know we're responsible and, you know, you don't want to get.
I don't want to be mandatory, you know.
So can we, so can we, so perhaps let's take this comeback, you know, that I love to try and be here for, but I will do some research and.
But I would say to the board, if you need test kits, we have them here. I say to the public, you need test kits, please come to us. Buying test kits are very.
And there's been an uptick, too. We've noticed people starting to pick up test kits again. Yeah, but again, that's part of the cultural change, I think, where people are just aware and just want to make sure they're doing the right thing.
Just a quick question.
So we're gonna look at this in November again.
To those in the staff, do you find anything in particular in this policy to be overly problematic or strictly of concern?
I think it was based, you know, when we were at the height of pandemic. I think at this point, we can be a little looser and kind of make decisions as we go based on how we've learned from this. But if we're gonna follow it to, you know, what it says in the policy, that's gonna be a little bit strict.
Number one, it's pretty aggressive. And I guess my question is, is, you know, if people are coming on board new to the staff, right? Are we asking them for vaccination cards?
Check and see if they're vaccinated. We do ask the question.
You do ask the question.
I do ask the question.
Is that still a legal question out on New York?
I think it's legal because it's our policy.
It's our policy.
Yes, it's our policy. But again, you know, this is where we are right now.
And we have a mechanism to handle if they're vaccinated.
Right.
With allowing them to test. And since we're in a period of no test, really not requiring those tests, we're okay. I think what really changed it for us is test kits.
The test kits and the masks, I think everybody at this point, as soon as they get a sniffle, they mask up regardless whether the testing does or not because they don't want it to affect others. So will everybody be conscious on this?
Again, it's a behavioral change that has taken place, I think.
It's almost a strange change as I'm missing the higher pandemic, so.
Yeah, this is from, bring it back.
I would guess all I would ask is, because I'm not living in this, given this policy, is that there's feedback, it'd be great to receive it so that as we think on it, we know what works, what doesn't, what seems overly restrictive and what doesn't.
Well, this policy does affect it because this affects, you know, us and the board, especially the active old employees. Also wouldn't affect us, so.
Does it affect here?
It shouldn't affect anybody.
It says I know.
It should.
I never went to a trustee and asked if they were vaccinated and see if they had.
Okay, well, that happened or not, you know. I mean, I wouldn't always say this too much at this point. We just need, the action item is we're gonna review it, we're gonna bring it right back. We'll make, we'll fine tune this as needed, you know. Yes, Steve, did you?
Well, I want to say in order to fully establish social restriction, again, I think we actually establish some sort of example. You know, I mean, positive cases, hospitalization, something like that.
I think that's actually where we're going and I think that's part of the discussion. In other words, the federal government doesn't have such stringent guidelines anymore. You know, in other words, there's already.
I mean, the University of Rochester.
Yeah, so what we're saying is we're probably gonna be all trying this because it's quite restrictive.
And it may not be the most popular, but I think anybody who's paid by the village should follow the same.
I agree.
Can you create a policy in its definitions that springs into existence only on the condition of a state of emergency or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, something that kicks in when there's certain criteria that are made.
Goes along with the pandemic policy, whether it's COVID or anything else.
That's true, too, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, my read on this is aligned with what Zach is saying and that, you know, and my recollection of this is that we implemented this when COVID was much more of a hot issue. Right now, my impression is that it's probably overly restrictive and burdensome and we're probably not compliant and I would be likely to weaken the policy at this point. I guess I would request that in addition to this, I think it would be great if, based on your medical expertise, you could talk to some people who have opinions about this. Maybe we could even just take something from, you know, look at what the town has. We have an example of another municipality. It might be great just to implement something that's less restrictive.
I'm not having that research.
I think that's where we're all going. I think, you know, based on what we're all hearing in the feedback. Okay, next up.
That's it?
Okay, minutes.
Minutes. We have several passes in minutes.
Okay, so first step, what's up is, where are we?
July 28th.
Yeah, July 28th. Special meeting.
I just had one comment on this, one if I may.
Yes, of course.
The discussion around the, okay, so this is where we approved the Frenzy Arboretum to cut Atlantis up to a certain DBH. And the motion, in my opinion, doesn't really reflect the discussion. The motion is more reflective of documentation that would be required from FOA and it doesn't specifically say, hey, you can cut this with this amount of inches DBH, which I think was the primary part of the motion. So I'd like to just have that reviewed and revised based on the discussion, the motion that was made. I would like to see that revision, too.
I will have it reviewed.
Thank you. I can send you a link of exactly where the discussion. Donate it, okay.
We have to.
She's got it. Okay, so we'll, you'll take a look at that already and then we'll bring it back. Next up is the August 28th special meeting.
Austin and I are absent.
Yeah, although I did look at the video discussion on that and I still, I think it was mentioned at the last meeting about the amended motion. I wasn't sure, in my review of the video, trustee Lampier did not acknowledge and say the, you know, this is the amendment that amending to my motion. There is discussion that the approval for doing things in the arboretum would be contingent on providing documentation. And a couple of things, I guess procedurally, the minutes are supposed to be a reflection of what legally happened during the meeting. And I, in my opinion, on reviewing the video, that didn't really seem to line up because I didn't see that a motion being amended the way this board usually does things. A second thing, which isn't as related to the minutes, is that we did receive an email from June Reeves of the Friends of the Arboretum and that was sent to the board. Some of the emails are sort of mixed, but it did go to the clerk as well. That was sent on August 3rd and, no, yes, August 30th was sent titled Small Atlantis Tree Removal and I believe that would constitute the documentation.
But this was additional documentation asked for at the 28th.
Here's, procedurally, this is the way I'm looking at this at the moment. At the meeting, I made a motion. I do not recall approving it, I guess that's the word I'm going to use, or accepting, verbally accepting. I think that's what has to happen when you change your motion or add to the original motion. I don't recall that, that action. I think it was something that was maybe said and then it would have been, I think, up to me if I made the motion to say that, yes, I would accept that or the trustee Marshall to add. She's gonna review the tape. Yeah, procedurally, I think we're gonna be correct. That would have need to have happened in order for it to be a part of the motion. Understood, understood. So she's gonna review the tape and then it's also.
I don't recall saying that.
Okay. There's also a typo, there was not Atlantis removal. Because that would be a really big deal to remove Atlantis. It would involve scuba gear, you know, deep dives. Yeah, you always think about Atlantis.
I just had one comment. Would it be possible, I think the way I may have referenced it at the time or maybe intended and look backwards if that's not true. But for the middle sentence where trustee Marshall began to share that the trail was not, or does have areas that should not be accessible to the public. Could you insert the current trail?
Yes. If it is stated, we cannot, cannot, yes, we can't have words.
So she's gotta look at the tape.
If I didn't say it, it's fine, it's like I'm not.
The tape stands.
This is one of the reasons why I don't like having verbatim and.
Correct.
Absolutely. We have staff working, new staff working, learning to do minutes, so.
You can strike the whole paragraph.
Honestly, I will take a look at it and see if it has any play within the meeting.
Yeah, however.
I'm not a big fan of a lot of ugly.
If you just want to hold this to the motion, that's fine with me, I agree.
Which is, yeah, that does it. And if people want to have more information, they can always watch the tape, you know.
All right, well, let's keep it simple, don't look it up, just strike the paragraph.
Do that.
Done, done. Okay, so there's that, I'm good with you. Okay, next up.
Got to be a set, you guys are gonna.
We do very good work.
Okay, so it's September 12th.
Right.
And you did not put down my absence.
Oh, yeah.
Because I was sick. First meeting we ever missed. Okay, so if you guys can take a look.
Did the Shabbat Memorial Day come back in?
Should, yes, they came back on the 26th.
Where they home taught me. So I will make a motion to approve this September 12th minutes. We're gonna amend them to add Mayor Plummer's absence. Point second.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall? Trustee, trustee Lampier?
Hi.
Trustee Bykett?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer's state. Hey, we're on a roll now. One.
Atlantis is there again.
You know, it's the spell check.
Yeah.
So it's very.
We can enter, we can enter that in a dictionary.
For some reason, I ran into it on another board and I'm like, it's really, trust me. It's like, it doesn't like HSA, it likes hairs. Really?
Under the stretch and rental, I don't know if I put lack of support and progress. I don't think I put lack of progress.
What's this? I'm sorry, we're looking, I'm short on minutes, I'm sorry.
So it's a very. Seven. I had concerns about lack of support and feedback, but not progress. But I don't know what progress they've made. And I don't want it to look like I'm thinking of them progressive. So I don't think, I don't think I sent that, I can't imagine I did. So I, you know, get removed from.
I will take a look at it if it is what you said stands.
Okay, just to review it, take a look, yeah. Okay, so we'll table that for now.
I think.
What?
I can change that.
You can change it, you're good, okay, just the word. Okay, anything else?
If that's the minor change, that's easily fixed.
That's good, that's good.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes with the suggestions that were made.
My second. Okay, trustee Marshall? Trustee Co., trustee Lampier?
Hi.
Trustee Lampier?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer? Pass it. I'm going to inform the board of the changes that were made with freedom of information. We like guarding minutes. There's new rules. It used to be we had to have them available for foil within 14 days. It now has to be up on the website within 14 days.
Even as a draft?
As a draft. We've always had a longstanding policy in the village that no minutes were posted in draft form because we didn't want minute confusion, but we have to now legally do it. So we are up to date, everything is posted and the draft ones are posted as draft. We're making it very clear they're draft, but that's a law we have to.
So this was a recent change, you learned about it.
Yeah, I learned about it in, like, naturally giving us compliance.
Have any municipalities gone around putting a draft up that just includes their minimum and then expanding it out?
A lot of municipalities, I will say, our minutes are very detailed. That's been the standard practice. A lot of them just put the motions in seconds and leave a lot of the other stuff out. That might be something we want to go to, to make it simple, but it's always, my thought is a little flavoring there is helpful to understand what happened. But it's really, you know, you go to a lot of them, it's like you look at them and go, wow, that's short.
Yeah, this came up at the Mayor's Association, one of the meetings like a while back. And they, because they all have their tapes online for everybody to see.
Right.
So most of them are just, you know, they're very minimal minutes, very minimal. And then they just go, and I think some of the, some of them say that they just have the link exact right with the minutes to the video.
In which we do.
You can just click if you want to see anything.
But, so now you'll see them up in draft form, even before you get to see them.
And draft will be big, right?
Yes, draft will be big, drafts on the thing, drafts on the thing. It's just we're following protocol.
Because it's a change, now that we do videos, it does change.
Things change.
Yeah, and so once I have time, there were the videos, it's going to help to have as much background.
So you don't, I, you know, there's a couple ways of looking at it. You look at what's someone going to read 100 years from now? Maybe that video isn't, you know, that's always been the concern with the archives because there was a time they did some change for a year or two and now that data can't be read. So it's always, you know, what are you leaving for the people down the road? So that's only my concern, but I'm saying legally, it's motions and seconds are all there required.
It has been for years.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. Any member tabs?
I did have, simplistically, because I, sorry, thank you and Alexandria for, Alexandria, for giving us the information, shirts from French Home, what has been brought to, you know, back and forth. I did not have a chance to read it, unfortunately. I saw it before to looking at that. But I guess I'm bothered a lot by a phrase that I seem to hear from bill residents, inform trustees and even from some of the short term rental advisory committee members is that we are looking for their opinions. And I really think that that's, to me, that's not what I'm looking for. I don't need opinions from five residents. We will get opinions from an open forum. I'm looking for research data from other communities similar to ours, what they're doing. I'm looking for problems that they have heard that have happened within our own community. I don't need opinions. Okay, so that's just my concern that we're hearing, I'm hearing that opinion we're brought a lot and I don't think that that's what we're looking for because we're not asking five people for their opinion because that's a real waste of time. So I have concerns about that.
Okay, we should probably go back to the original resolution, what was requested. And that's been sent to them, you know.
Does anybody have it?
I know, I don't have it in front of me.
Specifically asked for recommendations.
Yeah, recommendation, I think was the word.
Recommendations.
Yeah.
And recommendations to me is different. It's recommendations is information passed along that's been researched, that's been moved into factual information in that opinion.
Well, my understanding is that they're surveying, you know, different codes throughout the state that are already in effect, you know, and what seems to be could work for our village or nobody. And it goes back to what you were saying, like, what, you know, it doesn't have to be a consensus from everybody. It's just like, let's take, take a look at the whole survey, you know, because I think that's important. Steve, did you?
Well, that's why I didn't know if they were charged with reaching out to know the municipalities to look at, you know, their.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Because if they don't, then I would have.
Well, that's the whole point of having them.
Exactly.
That's my whole point.
That's help us.
Yeah, so.
As a very stylized example, imagine if the majority wanted no short term rentals at all. They give the recommendation, we should have no short term rentals.
Good something.
And then we get absolutely no information about policies that may be successful for short term rentals or occupy, not, we don't have any exploration of thought that then comes back to us to help us take our perspectives as representatives of the public in foreign policy or COVID. So to your point, I agree. And I think that's what the email sort of expressed, which is beyond just recommendations, the secondary level of recommendations. I hope, right, that their professionalism, I suspect, they'll come forward with examples of thought and clarity that can help guide us down, you know.
And I think that was factored into how the committee was set up because, you know, the way the committee was set up was some people may own one, some people may not, some, you know, some people may rent, some people may, you know, so to kind of net out, you know, so there isn't just one type of person or one person with one sort of type of background. I mean, and that was discussed before this board and that was the consensus that the board reached. So I think, you know, that's where we are.
I think we have a very well versed, well versed committee with a different perspective.
And, you know, they're all approved and they're supposed to be.
We just want to make sure that we get factual information. Plenty of opinions move up in the forum.
I will get a lot of opinions in short. I just, yes, I think the clarification might have been to set, if they were set up as a fact finding committee. In other words, this is your charge, you are a fact finding committee working to aid the trustees in their research for crafting possible legislation rather than we want to hear what you feel about short term rentals as a philosophically.
They were never told that at all.
They may have told that.
No, because that was not the directive from the board. That was never the director.
Sometimes all people think though, you know, they utilize what they're told and they inform stone follow what that means. So I just want to make sure that they're clear.
Alexandria's been working with them and really, really supporting them on this.
Any other member tabs?
No.
Okay, anybody, yep.
Yeah, I'm always good for a few. So a couple of quick ones. Steve, we had a talk once and I should have brought this board earlier, but I just, no. Outdoor storage for residential versus commercial use. Where are we with our code now with regards to any opportunities for enforcement at all?
There's nothing, I mean, our code is specific to a storage unit. Other than that, I don't have any teeth to whet for somebody who's got something under a cart.
Or anything, okay. But we do have something with regards to RVs and boats.
How about paths?
That's the short.
Yeah, it's covered in shorts. We have an ordinance regarding the time limit.
We have, we do have.
And what if somebody stores a boat under a cart and you don't notice a boat?
Kind of hard not to notice a boat.
So what's our boat and RV policy right now?
It's based on size and location of where you can store it. You can store it next to the garage, but it has to be screened from the neighbors, you know, things like that. know, things like that.
Various things like that. So is that type of code something that could easily translate to storage as well?
Probably, it looks like you could modify it for, you know, outdoor storage or whatever, you know, I don't know whether you would do it by size, by duration, you know what I mean?
Could it be something that the planning and zoning board can have a review of? That is to say, if somebody wants to have outdoor storage for an extended period of time, be it a photo or an RV, they have to ask for leniency from the policy, right?
Well, there's no, there's no provision in those policies for planning or zoning to, you know, bypass the requirements.
Okay, so.
Variance.
Yeah, thank you.
And there is no possibility for variance in those things, I don't believe, is there?
There's an area.
It would be an area variance.
Right. Okay. So somebody could submit for an area variance, be it variance to RV storage, boat storage, or any other storage. So I'll bring it back to this board. Do we want to request of our attorney, does anybody else have an interest in continuing this conversation?
What is the overall concern, just so I'm understanding, you know, the direction?
Yeah, so we have a lot of things about the environment that we protect for our residents, right, such as the historical preservation elements, right, that our HPB is so well. And as we, you know, meander around our community, things like boats and RVs clearly have come to the fore, but there's also opportunities where residents currently can create outdoor storage that may be unsightly relative to the, the view shed, the historical view shed. And so the question that I'm asking is, while there may not be many instances of that concern today that are, that we should, one should note or discuss, I guess, maybe without it being a attorney-client discussion, but it doesn't really matter, I don't know if it matters, but the point is there are, there are homes that one might not want storage under significant tarps in the public view shed, much like how we protect other things.
Okay, so the concerns, because it's already existing in the village, okay, without name and names, as you say.
Right, and it's been brought to my attention by dozens.
Okay, okay.
So I'm trying to politely navigate my way around this conversation to see if it's a direction that we might want to ponder, or a conversation that we might want to.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think it would be very challenging, because there are a number of properties in the village that don't have a garage or a shed, and so some properties do depend on just leaving their bikes and anything else of, you know, I'm very familiar with it because it's prevalent in my neighborhood for years, it still is. So it gets into personal freedoms, I think, a little bit, as far as, and also your, your aesthetics. Some people, it doesn't bother them to have their barbecue and their, you know, their carjack and whatever it is that you would typically keep in a garage next, sitting next to their garage. So what, I think what you might be asking is, does it have to be covered? Does it have to be limited in the amount of space it takes up on the property?
Size.
Without specifying what.
It is.
It is.
That's right.
It could be anything. It could be.
An item.
Toilets, like the man in, in, had all the toilets on his front yard. Not here, but it happened.
I don't want to store two hay bales on my front lawn and get away with it. That's not the goal. So, yeah, the question is, is there a way to craft a code that gives Steve an opportunity to ask residents to go ask for area variance, or potentially consider moving the location or the.
Out of public view.
Out of, or the sightfulness, or try to.
Yeah, right.
What we ask of, you know, so our residents.
Okay, so I just, this is helpful. Have you, so let's, I want to comment from another direction. Have you received complaints from residents about things like this?
I have received concerns from residents, yes.
Okay, okay, you know, just so we're trying to identify this as.
Through, yeah, I mean, through other residents, yes.
Okay.
But my concern would be to say, I mean, how do you kind of frame it, because like there are, there are several properties here that store hardwood under cars, under property. Do you limit that? Do you tell them they can't?
That would be me.
And there are multiple properties here that I'd go around and find a woodpile under a car, you know, pretty good size.
It's in public view, though.
Yeah.
It's in public view. So I'm saying public view, I mean, they have put anything in one.
I mean, like, you're going to community with postage stamp lots, like you say, they may not have a garage, they may not have a backyard that allows it, they may have to use a site.
Because that's a pre-existing and unconformity.
I can point out three or four properties right now that have wood piles under cars.
Yeah. Topsoil.
Yeah.
And some of it may be temporary, some of it may be seasonal, maybe not. Some of it may simply be that particular property doesn't have many options, so they get an area variance.
That's what I was saying, so do you have access to variance? So those people that do not get options can get cleared.
You're, you're going to ask somebody who spent $250 to, to get permission to store on the property they already paid for and pay tax, and it come to me, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
I just think you ought to be careful and, and maybe as far as what you restrict people to use of their own property, as long as it doesn't create a nuisance.
I mean, it's different with like an RV or, you know, and, and we already addressed that. Yeah, okay. Yeah, really.
I'm wondering if there's, maybe it's really a question for Jeff. We don't permit by code the outside display of merchandise. So if there's some connection between how that.
It's commercial, not residential.
Yeah, I, I understand the difference, but I'm, what I'm saying is, it's the premise that was used initially, is if some part of that could be utilized for outside display of whatever it is that people are, I mean, you can come up with all sorts of scenarios. I keep going back to the man because it was a huge lawsuit. He had toilets, I don't know, he was doing a renovation or something, and he had these toilets in his yard, and they, the town tried to bring charges against him, and so his answer was to cover his entire property with toilets. He put plants in, and he did, you know, they became a decorating.
I can tell you ahead of that.
Make a statement about personal freedom.
It was a statement.
So you can't go too far with, you know, dictating people's personal taste. I, I don't, I think that was the point, and I think that, that would be Jermaine here as well.
But would that be a way to craft the definition of nuisance that would be acceptable?
So it's all in the definition?
Some, some.
I mean.
Because they do have a, it's a, it's a.
It's sort of like the anxiety definition, you know, it is, but you know.
You know, you've seen it, yeah.
Mark is subjective. One man's junk, another man's trash.
That's right.
So.
Well.
However, there are some things that the majority of people would consider junk.
That's why I am.
Which is how you come up with, that's how you, these definitions of nuisance, are accepted.
I thought that there was a property on State Street that was a rental, yeah, because I remember talking to her, and she said, she used to have a daycare, she remember when I'm talking about, open your bum, and she used to have bikes and kid stuff all over, stuff laying on that lawn all the time, like almost covered with just stuff.
Stuff, yeah.
And I think she was, I mean, I think, I don't know if she then, went to her and said she needed to clear, and we are, she's not happy about it, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if you just did it just to say, hey, clean up your yard, or if you had any, you know, anything about it to, to support you.
It's a tricky situation.
Yeah.
You need a pretty well-crafted ordinance to back you, that kind of thing. The trustees would have to figure out incidentally what they want.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I don't know if there's other municipalities that have anything, but if you, is that something you'd want to, look into, or do some research, or I don't know.
Yeah, well, I, I'm getting a gauge of the room, so is the general thought is, this is a path worth pursuing, or one to completely leave alone?
I don't know, but I've seen it as a big issue, that's why I was asking, like, are there complaints, like, where are we going with this? That's the only reason why I'm, I'm just trying to gauge that.
In many respects, I think it's not dissimilar to, say, short-term rental. If it's your neighbor, it's a problem per se, if you feel that way, you would rather have a full-time resident next to you. In the same vein, is it's not a problem for anybody other than the person who's right next door to it, right? So the question of the code is, do you write code to protect and insulate few people who may be experiencing that discomfort should it arise? But it's such a small residence, right? So it's not dissimilar, I think, to how we may think of, or some may think of, having a hotel next door, or whatever.
Interesting.
Sounding a little bit like an HOA, sort of.
Yeah.
Right? They have.
Yeah.
Specific.
Sure.
Language regarding what you can have in your yard and what you can't, and I think that's a little bit like that.
And it's just how far down that path might one want to travel, obviously, standard and customary uses, like storing, you know, wood, standard and customary, but something that is completely non-standard and customary that store.
Like toilets?
Like toilets.
Furniture, I just can't imagine.
A nuisance to the public view shed, right? So how would you write that code, and you, would you like to see that code at all?
It'd be really hard to say, you know, if you say somebody's got a 10 by 20 wood pile and somebody's got a 10 by 20 aisle of furniture.
That's covered.
That's covered, there's still 10 by 20 piles, and I would think in a court of law, you would have a really hard time saying you can't store that furniture with your neighbors and store a 10 by 20 pile of wood.
Or if it was, going back to the toilet example, you know, I'm blank, I think it was in the Museum of Fine Art in Boston, and it was an exhibit, and the art was a toilet, and it was really controversial. What I'm just saying, if somebody could put that in their yard and say, no, this is an art piece, you know, in other words, again, it's what Zach said earlier, you know, a subjective, it can be, I don't know, I mean, and I agree with Jeff, it'd have to be really carefully crafted.
It's funny you say, there's something really nice, there was a, there was a case out on the West Side, where John had a bunch of cars, town kept pulling after them, pulling after them, so what they ended up doing is making a giant boombox.
Oh, wow.
Like a sculpture.
He took the car, and.
An art installation.
A bunch of them welded them together in an eighteen-foot tall art piece in a giant.
So there you go, Mikey, careful what we're looking for.
We could be the dog chasing the car and catching the car.
It was, it was actually pretty beautiful.
I mean, the other thing about that, a little bit, can we just, like.
Yeah, I don't have a fully formed opinion, I'm still.
That's good.
And I don't either, I'm just bringing resident concerns forward. Okay.
I feel pretty confident, if you wanted something, we could answer something.
Good.
If you wanted something, let's, let us think about it.
That's what I'm.
Maybe do some research on that, too, what else is out there.
Well, Jeff, your comment sounds like if we asked you to write code, you could come up with something.
Oh, sure.
Okay, so we don't.
As long as you provide, as long as you gave me guides about what you want.
And can't you also indict a ham sandwich?
Next comment, code, there you go. The car, parking spots, thanks for striking.
Oh, yes, I'm so excited, it looks so good, thank you.
Yeah, were we, did you get the ones right up on North Main or South Main done? Are you doing those ones between like?
Where the town hall is?
Yeah, in that area and across the street and.
Man, you know, I, I contemplated that for a little while, and I decided to do it this year.
This year.
Intentionally, because so far I have not seen any issues, talking to Mikey, nothing outside, I'm sorry, talking to parking enforcement, nothing outside the world, which is people who are blatantly disregarding parking. So defining parking stalls, I think is going to be more problematic in there because of the use.
So my preference would be to stripe it, and there's a few reasons for that. One, you know, I just, I was actually heading home and stuff at the margarita bar, good margaritas, by the way, and there was six feet of space in between full-size cars, and I think we're losing parking by not defining parking, right? The second thing is traffic control. When you're driving on these roads, if you just have straight lines and open spots, right, that aren't marked, visually, you think about it differently. So as the night winds on or in the early mornings when people aren't parked there, by not having them striped, it makes the road feel wider, and I think it will increase the pace of traffic.
And make people think it's a lane.
It may, right, but I think more importantly, it's about having defined spots, keeping people to have more parking available. We can keep them fairly narrow if we want, I don't know if there's a, if you have to have a certain length.
So there was one consideration, don't want to say the lowest, because there are some areas where it would have made more sense to have like a compact car parking, but then it would have to be posted, the policy would probably have to reflect that specifically for compact car parking. I'm sure.
Can I just interject? One thing, too, that came up when Nice Stop was, you know, camped out here in the village, there was that discussion that sort of the, a model that they were looking at was to not do the striping, and that, you know, because there's huge vehicles and then there's compact cars, so, you know, when you said, oh, there was a little spot, and there was like six feet or whatever in between, and, you know, that was wasted, well, it could have been my car that just pulled out of it, because I drive a small car. In other words, it's sort of seek, they were saying, it all seeks its own water level, where people park just within those parameters.
It could have been a 22-foot-long pickup truck that had pulled out of a spot and a small car would be there.
Yeah.
So defining the stalls, right now we're doing 18-foot lengths, which is kind of like the middle ground, I mean, technically, they should be 20-foot, but by going 20-foot, you're really, you're shrinking the amount of parking that you have.
You go smaller?
Yeah.
So going smaller, I mean, a typical car is, is, you know, about 16 to 18 feet, and that's, that's a car, you know, so pickup trucks, anything bigger than that, you're shoving them outside of being a park.
Which public space.
Yeah, it's a parking lot.
Yep, I don't need to have a main street designed for F-150s.
I would, yeah.
Park it in back there, yeah.
So, I'll, who the board asks, do I ask me to, too?
Well, I think it's a good discussion, you know, because it's, it.
Is that a vote thing, or is that a procedure open? Like, how do we, how does it work?
Well, you were directed before, by the way.
Yeah.
You know, it's a direction, it's a directive.
Kind of out of time at this point, too, with the weather.
I know, the weather's getting.
And that's another point that we had, and they picked and choose, you know, chose what I wanted to spend time doing, especially what they hatched out areas by the crosswalks and one of the church.
Yeah.
If we can find decent enough weather to get back out before we really get into leaf season, you guys will get back to us. Carry on with the 18-foot parking stalls.
Because that's where you're already going, with the 18. Yeah, you had a comment?
Yeah, Harvard 47, Washington Avenue. All of the research we've done over the years has indicated that parking, parking stalls is advantageous for traffic control, because the higher level of detail you have on the road, it's a visual cue to drivers to slow down. That's why it's incorporated into the village's active transportation plan. They also talked about this issue in 2011, when the village adopted its complete streets policy, so I endorse what Dave Marshall was suggesting.
Great, thank you. Yeah, you know, I mean, I think it's a good discussion, because, you know, that, that was the most recent discussion we have with Nice Stop, about striping or not striping. You know, that, that was definitely a change even from then.
Yeah.
Well, I support Dave's concept, I don't know.
I'm good either way.
Literally, and.
So we, we want to just suggest continuing the earlier directive?
Okay.
To continue.
Providing I can flag a tide and the weather, if I can, if I can do so.
Sure.
Great.
Thank you.
I had two other questions. Has anybody heard anything with regards to the fire hall, their master plan, Thank America, and the?
My understanding is that there's negotiations ongoing right now.
Okay, so they've actually been able to.
That's the only thing I've heard, but nothing more than that, and I haven't had And I haven't had a verified, other than just what I've heard.
Better than nothing.
Better than nothing, yeah.
That's all.
The last thing was, in addition to, I think, a tour with Prism?
Yes, and I'm waiting to hear back from Prism, I haven't heard back, so I don't have any dates to provide, because they, Prism wanted to include some other people within it, and he hasn't gotten back to me, and I know the mayor's a silly job as well.
So, that was specific to the invasives, and I believe the FOA had invited us through Frank Paco Mies.
Right, and I...
To do a separate...
Right, well, my thought was, we were doing everybody all at once.
All at the same time?
That'd be good. Yeah.
Yeah, because FOA wanted me...
It was me, too.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Makes sense.
It's a public meeting.
It's going to be a public meeting by post, too, and why not do it all at once?
Hey, guess I just throw this out to the community, Mr. Corey, as part of the FOA, is that seem like a reasonable thought for you guys as well?
Well, we were hoping to cover, cover other issues, the Prism meeting will be focused on the management and mitigation of municipal species. There's other issues, background issues, that we both hope to share with you in a walkthrough. So, we would like to do two walkthroughs. One, one for Prism, will be focused on the basic species, which we want to help you with. And another, which will give you the background on all the other issues.
So, what I would request is that FOA sends an agenda, then, of what you'd like to cover with your other walkthrough to, to the village clerk, I think that'd be helpful for everybody, so we know, you know, where you're going with that, that would be great, yeah.
Even if we set up like, an hour board meeting, and had a half hour dedicated to the FOA walkthrough, and then maybe, or 45 minutes, whatever, and then a half an hour dedicated to Prism after, and then we just meet them at a particular trailhead at a particular time, something like that might work out well.
Well, anyway...
So, more efficient.
Go.
I would just say, given the time of year we're going into, this really meeting to walk the trails will have to be during the day.
Like?
So, most likely, if you're looking during the work week, that might be a problem for the board members, I don't know. If we're looking at a Saturday, I need to know that as well.